Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of July 10th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. If you're here to speak on Item 8A, the sewer connection fees item, we're not considering that this evening, and we'll be rescheduling that, and it will be noted for a future meeting, we will not be voting on sewer fees tonight. So if anybody's still here for that, you're welcome to stay or leave. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Bart Hight, who is the pastor of New Life Church in the Northwest, to offer the invocation. We're just so thankful, Pastor, for the partnership of your church with CAP-KAY to provide a food pantry for our most vulnerable every couple of weeks, and really appreciate that. Following the invocation, Brayden Mendebro, who's the city's high school intern and a senior at Liberty High School, he'll lead us in the pledge. Brayden is a high school intern with the city's Development Services Department. He also has dual enrollment at Bakersfield College. He's currently a four-dimensional dream builder, that's a big deal, and National Hispanic Recognition from the College Board. Brayden previously served as ASB President at Liberty High, social media manager for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and he's an appointee to our Youth Commission. Thank you so much for your service. And at this point, if you all would rise and Pastor Bart come forward.
Thank you. Can we bow our heads, please? Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who loves us and loves every one of us in this very room. You never leave us, you never forsake us. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen in this city, and every city in your image. We thank you for the calling you have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. And I thank you tonight, God, for these your servants, our mayor, our city staff, and our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. And I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting and pleasing to you according to your scriptures, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And God, I pray for personal peace in each of their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. I pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. I pray that the peace that your scripture says passes all understanding will be in this room tonight, and will guard our hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. And we pray that your kingdom would come in Bakersfield as it is in heaven through your power working in each of them, your servants. May your truth be revealed, and may your light shine brighter. We love you, Jesus, we appreciate you. In your name we pray tonight. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor Brayden.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Brayden. And you are free to leave now or join us. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the council chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, Item 4A, proclamation to Keith F. Powell, Recreation Supervisor II of Recreation and Parks Department, declaring July 2024 as Recreation and Parks Month in Bakersfield.
No matter where we live, no matter what part of the city, everyone wants positive recreational amenities for their families. And we're so privileged to have our Recreation and Parks Department responsible for 63 public parks, four public pools, and 10 spray parks, two sports complexes, and two skate parks, several pickleball court locations, including our newest location at Jastro Park, and one very large amphitheater. I am so glad to have Keith Powell here, and thank you Recreation Parks Department for your continued commitment to our community. It's my honor to proclaim the following. Whereas recreation programs and parks are essential to communities across America, including the city of Bakersfield, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental in establishing and maintaining our community's quality of life while contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community, and whereas recreation is invaluable to residents in providing positive alternatives for children and youth, especially during non-school hours, and whereas parks and green spaces remove pollution from the air, lower city temperatures, and aid in capturing and storing water, now therefore I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Recreation and Parks Month in our city, and urge all residents to enjoy the social, physical, mental, and environmental benefits derived from the city's parks, our streetscapes, and our programs. It's my honor to present this to Keith Powell. Keith, thank you so much, and you're welcome to introduce your team and offer remarks.
Having just closed one of the busiest days of our Recreation and Parks Department at Riverwalk Park, it is my pleasure to bring up some of our staff today. And with me today, I have our park manager, ranger manager, Mr. Billy Owens. And I'll have introduced the two rangers that are with him, and also I have Erica Aceveda, who's one of our recreation coordinators. And Bill, if you'd like to introduce the rangers.
We have Officer Ranger Gonzalez and Osorono, and Gonzalez is one of our newest rangers to the city program, and we did steal him from the county. And Erica is one of our coordinators who's come up in the program. She started out as a program leader, moved up to become a coordinator for us, and now she's a full-time coordinator, and hopefully moving up real soon into another position. Bakersfield is stronger, more vibrant, and more resilient because of our recreation parks and apartments and programs. We'd like to thank the city, staff, and council members for believing in recreation and parks and providing us the necessary tools to carry out our duties. The Fourth of July event demonstrated our ability to network and support our community, partners to benefit our residents. A big thank you to the Bakersfield Police Department, Bakersfield Fire Department, and the associated staff that made this event a success for the city. The national motto this year for 2024 is "Where You Belong." That was demonstrated on July 4th, 2024, at Riverwalk Park. We appreciate all the assistance and all the things that you guys do for us, and we're very proud to be part of the city of Bakersfield.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, Item 4B, proclamation to Andy Sullivan, Director of the Kern County Library, celebrating the anniversary of the Kern County Library System and highlighting the rich past of community service and commitment to libraries.
Well, welcome. Welcome, Andy Sullivan, Linda Fidler, Farah Dradya, and the Kern County Library staff, and anyone else that came with them. We are so blessed to have our libraries. I know many of you council members, you've spoken about the wonderful times that you've enjoyed in libraries. So today, it's my honor to read this proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed July 11th, 2024, as Kern County Library System Day in our city in celebration of the more than 100 years of dedicated service to Bakersfield and Kern County, in recognition of the Kern County Library System established in 1911 to provide community members with access to books, services, resources, and other educational materials, in recognition of the collaborative efforts of Kern County Library to enhance the quality of life for residents, demonstrate a model of excellence, and foster a culture of innovation, in recognition of Kern County Library's continued commitment to building our community by cultivating opportunities to enrich the lives of residents and connect them with new ideas and information, in recognition of the partnership with the city of Bakersfield, and in recognition of the many persons and organizations throughout the decades who have supported the Kern Library System and aided in the advancement of our community. It's my honor to be able to present this to you. Congratulations. Thank you. And why don't you all come further back here? You're welcome to offer comments.
Good evening. I'm Andy Sullivan. Thank you for this proclamation. I'm very thrilled to be sharing with you this whole crew behind me that makes it happen, and Linda Fidler, who is a community member and an advocate for libraries, and set this whole proclamation up. So I really appreciate it. I did want to highlight a few statistics from the four libraries that you guys are supporting, so I grabbed some statistics today. Let me get my glasses, I'm over 50. Just so you know, all 22 of our library branches, not just the four, but all 22 of our library branches across the county, in the month of June, we had 81,000 people walk through our doors. Amazing, right? And in Bakersfield alone, we had about 43,000, so it's about half. Of course, that makes sense, the other half are in the county areas. So there's a lot of need, and there's a lot of use at our libraries. So the four libraries that you guys are helping to support and contribute to are the Holloway Gonzalez Branch, the Baker Branch, the Northeast Branch, and I am forgetting, Wilson, thank you, I worked at Wilson, I loved Wilson, and the Wilson Branch. So during the last six months, when this project started and partnership started, we had over 1,100 new library cards. Just in those four branches, we had 350 literacy-focused events. We had over 4,000 people attend those literacy-focused events. We had about 11,500 Wi-Fi sessions, those are unique Wi-Fi sessions. That is amazing. That means people are plugging in every day, and so it's different every single day. We had over 4,000 computer users, and 37,000 items checked out, physical items. Digital items, we had about 6,000. So about 41,000 items checked out from those four branches that you supported, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I'm going to introduce Farah behind me. Farah is our marketing guru, and she's going to share some items that we'll give to Mayor Go to hand you for those four branches. Go ahead, Farah.
Hi, my name is Farah Dradya. I do marketing promotions for Kern County Library. I wanted to present these calendars that I brought of items, of events that are happening at these four locations, and with your support and contribution, how it's created such a positive impact for the community. So I did bring those, and I hope to see you guys at some of these events that we're having. They're so much fun. It's so exciting to see these libraries fill up with fresh faces, with old faces, returning faces. It's so nice to see. Oh, and please come guest-read at our libraries, because we have such a great program where leaders, we call Leaders Are Readers, where they come in and they read to the kids, and they create such a positive impact. Oh, and then I'd like to introduce Shalyn, she's the Assistant Director of Libraries.
Thank you. My name's Shalyn Panetta. I'm Assistant Director of the Kern County Library. I guess I'm a little taller. And so since February, since this agreement with our Kern County Library and Bakersfield City went into effect, we jumped to it and did lots of interviewing and hiring, and we managed to get the Holloway Gonzalez Branch open in May, and all of the other three, Northeast, Baker, and Wilson, opened, expanded to five days a week in June. So we're just getting started. It took me a while to get everybody hired, but we're ready to roll. We made it by summer, and this is going to be the best year ever for our Bakersfield branches. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's give it up.
Do a couple of them again. Pretty squeezed together, perfect, perfect. All right, and we'll do a couple of them. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you all. Give it up for the president.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times, depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call on you at a later time, so please listen carefully. For public statements, if public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first three public speakers are Johnny Olagaz, Cecilia, Kev.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Johnny Olagaz. I am the existing CEO of a few companies in town. As an entrepreneur and proud resident, for 25 years, I have recently been told that I am no longer allowed to reach out to agents of the city of Bakersfield without appointment due to pending litigation. This has been across several departments. I'm currently saving the solid waste division over $16,000 per month in hauling some of their material out of their site, and I do not charge the city anything. I don't charge them a dollar. I take it. However, you guys are paying another contractor money to do that. So I'm here to request, I need an email or a letter acknowledging that I am no longer allowed into city property, so that I can forward that to my clients and customers. I'm here, and I quote, and just so you guys know, I also provide services for the state of California and other governmental agencies that work with Bakersfield and Kern County. So communication is key between myself and my team, which has become a problem. And I'm going to quote Mr. Bob Smith, "I'm here to serve the community the best I can, and if they perceive that and interpret that as a conflict, then I'll just do business differently." So I'm here to say, I need an email acknowledging that I am no longer allowed into city property due to pending litigation, which you are aware of, and that's my statement.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia, followed by Kev, followed by Valeria.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello again. My name is Cecilia Marcial, and I am a perinatal nurse in the city of Bakersfield, representing only myself. Last night, I participated in a medical emergency with luck, a working hospital, supplies, and living healthcare workers. Everyone is still alive. I have been watching healthcare infrastructure in Gaza be destroyed by a U.S.-funded genocide. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, you called us heroes. Well, now my colleagues, those same heroes are being systematically targeted with U.S. weapons. In the last eight months, the settler colonial state of Israel has killed over 500 healthcare workers, including six doctors from Doctors Without Borders. This is more healthcare workers than all reported conflicts globally in 2021 and 2022 combined. Ten children are amputated every day in Gaza. One child is murdered by "the most ethical army in the world" every 10 minutes. 15,000 children, more than all global conflicts in the last four years, have been killed by the apartheid state. How many Palestinians have to die to break your moral apathy? In closing, I'd like to remind us all that our county has been nicknamed "The Killing County" because the police here have notorious rates of police brutality. From the Kern River to the Mediterranean Sea, we will be free.
Next speaker, please. Just a reminder that that isn't appropriate behavior for the chambers. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kev, followed by Valeria, followed by Carmen.
This is just supplementary information.
Please introduce yourself.
Okay. Well, you know me. Again, Karen, hello. How was the sushi? Was it good? I don't care. I'm here to speak on how the removal of the olive trees in downtown was an inhumane act by the city. And I see that Andre isn't here, but this is a city-wide issue, or at least it goes into it. Because if we look at treeequitiescore.org, Bakersfield has hardly any areas with more than 20% tree coverage, and looking in deeper, the areas with that level of canopy coverage are predominantly white and wealthy, whereas the areas with the least are black and brown working class or poverty. And considering that tree coverage can reduce heat in an area by up to 10 degrees Fahrenheit, we can see that this is environmental discrimination, in which the city doesn't do much to make up for it. There's no extra water and electrolyte distribution programs, no extra cooling stations, no shelter beds proposed before the start of summer, and that doesn't even address the refusal to take action of the root causes of the connected environmental and community issues, like having a better environmental stance to mitigate our climate instability, or working harder to ensure that everybody in this community can even be housed. That in the end, these actions say that you don't care about the community members who have to exist in this heat. And I know the conditions for us here are nowhere near as bad as that for the Palestinians, but these are the reasons why I say that the city's failure to condemn the genocide reflects the way that they are willing to comply with the system that enables it. Because Israel also kills olive trees. They kill them by the thousands that have lived for centuries and have been a part of families for their generations. And then they displace the Palestinians, making them unhoused and force them to endure the summer heat with little water. Free Palestine, free oppressed people. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Valeria, followed by Carmen.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Afternoon. I am here today to talk about three reports that have released in the past few months regarding the inhumane treatment brought down on Palestinians by their oppressors. First, I want to talk about the new death tool estimate by The Lancet, one of the oldest and most reputable peer-reviewed medical journals to exist. The numbers I have been bringing to you regarding the death tool for the past several months have been provided by Gaza's Health Ministry, with highly limited capabilities of counting the dead, given that Israeli occupation forces are constantly bombing the hospitals they use for research. The Lancet reports that their conservative estimate results in a count of up to 186,000 or even more deaths. Secondly, I want to talk about a report from Hareets, revealing that documents obtained, as well as testimonies from soldiers, mid-level, and senior IDF officers, state that they deployed a procedure known as the Hannibal Directive, a procedure where they, the IDF, are allowed to kill their own civilians. The final report I am going to talk about was the CNN report on Sadi Taman, brought forth by Israeli soldier whistleblowers about their concentration camps for Palestinians. These are photos leaked by Israeli soldiers. The soldiers describe a setting where Palestinians' limbs sometimes had to be amputated due to injuries from constant handcuffing, often performed by underqualified medics, earning a reputation for being a paradise for interns. These prisoners are put under extreme physical restraint, they are strapped to their beds, and wear diapers and are fed through straws. Israeli soldiers describe beating them not for information, but for what they see as revenge. People can argue that our goal of getting you to call for ceasefires is pointless, but I refuse to forget that Mayor Karen Go announced her support for Israel and her gratefulness for America's bond with Israel back in October, and she has yet to walk back on it. After all the evidence we have brought forth of abuse, of ethnic cleansing, of war crimes, after the Palestinians here in Bakersfield have come and given their personal testimonies, for that, she deserves to be shamed for the rest of her life, and so does the rest of this council that refuses to take action. Free Palestine.
Next speaker, please.
Carmen, followed by Brian.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Patty Gray. This is your son. He was assaulting people out in front of City Hall and smacking cellphones out of people's hands, and I love that you're praising the police for doing nothing about it. Let's see. Let's hear something horrific, shall we? Israeli forces fatally shot 14-year-old Gassan Garib Hussein Zaran in the back while he played with friends yesterday in the central occupied West Bank. Israeli settlers and soldiers attacked Palestinian residents who tried to reach Gassan while he bled out. Gassan Garib Hussein Zaran, 14-years-old, was shot and killed around 2:00 PM on July 9th in the Palestinian village of Deir Abu Mashal, west of Ramallah in the central occupied West Bank, according to documents collected by Defense for Children International Palestine. Gassan, accompanied by two other children, was playing at the entrance of the village near the Israeli-only road Route 465. Three Israeli soldiers traveling in a civilian vehicle on Route 465 fired live ammunition at the children from a distance of 200 to 300 feet away. Gassan was struck with a bullet in the back. Then an ambulance brought him to the Palestinian medical complex in Ramallah.
Carmen, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yes, I will. I would like to leave you with the sound of a baby crying. She has one limb, no mother, 14 dead family members, and a dad left, and we're paying for this. Ceasefire, free Palestine.
Next speaker, please.
Brian.
Hello.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Brian Carthens. I'm a visitor from St. Louis. I just wanted to give this council a couple of notes, just as a visitor, a fresh pair of eyes, that you guys have never seen before, and you've never, and I've never seen you. So number one, that intro that you guys do is really weird. You guys should reconsider it. It's giving Starship Troopers. I don't know if this council is familiar with that, but it's very authoritarian. Number two, the Christian prayer. I'd like to know when Muslim prayer night is. Where do I sign up for that? Number three, this first warning that you get about disruptive actions and behaviors sets a tone. This first warning, we all come in with a first warning. That sets a tone. It's not very good. Next, I would like to know how much of the budget, the city budget, is spent on police. I hope it's not more than 50%. Let's keep that down to 10%, if you guys would like it. Has the council formed a ceasefire resolution? It sounds like you have not. That would be very helpful. It would probably sit better with all of your consciences. We wouldn't be up here giving you guys crap. I don't know if that word is allowed. Next, I would like to say, is this council aware that it is complicit through its inaction? I'm guessing that you all know that you are. Every day that you all sit here and look at me, and the rest of these fine people who warn you about the events that you're complicit in, another family in Gaza dies, another child is killed, another family is taken away from their relatives, some of these people are losing 10, 20, 30 members of their entire family, so just keep that in mind as you all sit here and look at me crazy. Somebody talked earlier about a thirst for justice. I don't see any of that. Gaza is drowning, drowning in your inaction. Keep that in mind. And the last thing I'll leave you with, pretend it's your children. Pretend these are not white, I'm sorry, pretend these are not Middle Eastern children that you're seeing. Pretend this isn't so far away. Pretend these are your children. I know you all probably consider your children safe, if you have them, from bombs being dropped on them, or maybe running out of water and not having a safe place to sleep tonight, but think about it, maybe it could be you one day.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Goh, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7E3, transmitting the signed agreement.
Do we have any public statements for agenda items?
There are no public statements for agenda items.
Well, actually, just wait for a minute and let our guest leave. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item now.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you. And Councilmember Weir?
Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to pull an item for specific reasons? No? Seeing none? Seeing no other items pulled for separate consideration, Councilmember Weir will make a motion to approve the agenda, items 7 through A through 7I.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings items 8A and 8B for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 8A, requesting the change to the staff recommendation to open and close public hearing, as the item will be renoticed for a future meeting. An additional staff memorandum was received regarding item 8B, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. Again, to clarify, we're not considering the sewer connection fees this evening. It will be renoticed for a future meeting. And if for some reason you really need to speak on the sewer fee item tonight, we'll move it to the public hearing agenda item. It's now time for consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portions of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that the hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearings.
Good evening. I would like to request to remove 8B for separate consideration, please. Thank you.
8B. Thank you. Does any council member, is there anybody else who wishes to have an item removed for separate consideration? Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? So at this time, consent calendar public hearing item 8A is now closed, and I will be moving 8B to the end of item 9, which will be the hearings. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating that your time is up. Please end your statements quickly. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider a resolution for vesting tentative tract map 7356 phased. A staff memorandum was provided regarding this item, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. City Manager Clegg?
Yeah, I think Mayor and Council, our Planning Director Paul Johnson will provide some brief context for this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. If I could get the clerk to bring up the slideshow, I'd appreciate it. I just have a few slides to show, and the clerk can advance those maybe just as easy as I do. So this is vesting tentative tract map 7356. It's located in southwest Bakersfield. The request is to subdivide 63 and a half acres into single-family homes, and what you are considering tonight is an appeal to the Planning Commission's approval of this project. More specifically, it's located in the West Ming Specific Plan, Village A, often referred to as Highgate at Seven Oaks. The map itself is to subdivide into 218 single-family lots, four public park lots, which will be maintained by the HOA, one drill site, and one drainage basin. The Planning Commission did consider this on May 2nd of this year. Just prior to their consideration, we did receive a letter from Friends of the Bakersfield Kitfox and Environment that a memorandum was prepared transmitting that letter to the Planning Commission. There being no one at the public hearing to speak in support or in favor, the Planning Commission considered this project on the consent agenda. Within the timely manner, as allowed by the appeal process, the Friends of the Bakersfield Kitfox and Environment, I'll just refer to as Friends, did submit an appeal to the Planning Commission's approval on May 10th, 2024. Their appeal referenced the letter that was submitted to the Planning Commission in the memorandum. In response to that appeal, the property owner did prepare a response, and it was dated June 18th, and all three of these documents are included in the admin report. As noted by the city clerk, earlier today, we did receive additional comments from Friends. Basically, they just supplemented minorly information from their appeal. Staff has reviewed that and believes that the response that was provided by the property owner is sufficient. Therefore, your council has two options with the appeal. The first is to deny the appeal and approve vesting tentative tract map 7356. This decision would uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the map, or your council could approve the appeal, which in that case would deny the tract map. In other words, you would overturn the Planning Commission's decision to approve. Staff is recommending option one, to deny the appeal and approve the map. This is the end of my presentation. I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you. And before we open the hearing, I will ask the city clerk to read Councilmember Freeman's reason for recusal, please.
Mayor Goh, Councilmember Freeman is abstaining from this item due to personal financial effect, the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Thank you. And Councilmember Smith?
Did you have public?
No, I think you were accusing yourself.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. And now, we're open for comments from the public. At this time, hearing item 9A is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
I'm Dante. My name is Dante Almaguer. I just came here to, just to see how this works, because I've never been to a council meeting before. But I just wanted to say, the last thing I think we need is more single-family homes in a rich neighborhood. I think, personally, they're ugly. I don't know. I feel like more apartments would be nice, because I feel like single-family homes just take up a lot of space, a lot of water, and you're ruining beautiful greenery. Because look how nasty and brown it is. I think single-family homes have their place in every city, for sure, but I just feel like more single-family homes with more pools, with more, I don't know, I just feel like it's a waste of resources, a waste of water. I just think, I feel like it'd be, I understand there is a lot of red tape to building apartments because there's a lot of red tape. There's more payments. I know you have to pay more for parking space, and I know that, I think, in some states in the U.S., a lot of, that's why a lot of people don't build apartment complexes, is because they have to pay so much for parking space. I understand that, but I just feel like maybe it'd be more beneficial if we either renovated into a nice park, or maybe apartments, but I understand if that's out of, you know, there's limits to that. Anyway, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Welcome, Mr. Thayer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Thayer, Senior Vice President of Castle &amp; Cook. Tonight, we have our attorney that has responded to the Friends of the Kitfox. She's here tonight to address any concerns you may have, Ms. Teller from the law firm of Remy, Moose, and Manley. We also reviewed a late copy of the Friends, of Kitfox Friends, this afternoon, and in that response, they referenced that the surveys that our biologist had done should have been taken or done it in the evening. And our biologist provided a response to that, saying he provided the survey in accordance with the protocols that are in place with the resource agency. I would like to drop that off. I know it was sent to the city earlier, but don't know if it was sent very late, so if I can drop that off. And also, if you have any questions with the response from our attorney, or the response from the Friends of the Kitfox, Ms. Teller is here to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. You can just place that in the tray, and our city clerk will get it. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in support? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to provide rebuttal statements in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to provide rebuttal statements in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, item 9A, and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask staff one more time. Staff feels responses from the applicant to the appeal have been adequately made.
That is correct, Councilmember Smith, yes.
Thank you. With that, I will make the motion to deny the appeal and approve vesting tentative tract map number 7356, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve vesting tentative tract map 7356.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent, and Councilmember Freeman abstaining.
Thank you. And now, next item will be 8B. Madam Clerk, would you read that item, please?
Public hearing to consider first reading of an ordinance for zone change number 24-0339, housing element rezones.
Thank you. And we'd like to, Councilmember Freeman? The door might be locked. City Manager Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, our Planning Director Paul Johnson will offer some introductory comments to this item.
Just thank you. And again, as the city clerk pulls up the slides, I'd like to recognize Jose Fernandez in the audience. He's worked hard on these rezoning efforts, trying to get our housing element approved. So this is a zone change on approximately 420 acres throughout various sites in the city, and it's to facilitate compliance with the California Housing Element Law. This is necessary to provide the required inventory of housing sites that are appropriately zoned to comply with the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, ORINA, and you've heard that term several times, for the sixth cycle housing element. Housing elements go in eight-year cycles, so the sixth cycle is 2023 to 2031, in which case, the city of Bakersfield was tasked with constructing 37,461 homes at various income levels during this time. So the per-
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent and Councilmember Freeman abstaining.
Thank you. And now, next item will be 8B. Madam Clerk, would you read that item, please?
Public hearing to consider first reading of an ordinance for zone change number 24-0339, housing element rezones.
Thank you. And we'd like to... Councilmember Freeman? The door might be locked. A City Manager, Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, our Planning Director, Paul Johnson, will offer some introductory comments to this item.
Yes, thank you. And again, as the city clerk pulls up the slides, I'd like to recognize Jose Fernandez in the audience. He's worked hard on these rezoning efforts, trying to get our housing element approved. So this is a zone change on approximately 420 acres throughout various sites in the city. And it's to facilitate compliance with the California Housing Element law. This is necessary to provide the required inventory of housing sites that are appropriately zoned to comply with the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, OR RENA, and you've heard that term several times, for the sixth cycle housing element. Housing elements go in eight-year cycles. So the sixth cycle is 2023 to 2031, in which case, the city of Bakersfield was tasked with constructing 37,461 homes at various income levels during this time. So the purpose of this is to provide sufficient opportunities or a site inventory where these homes could be built. It's relevant to note that out of that 37,000-plus, that's 65% of the county's overall 57,650 housing units that must be built. As noted, various locations, all our correspondence with this included a link. And that was a link where you could access a website. And it was interactive, where you could zoom in and actually pull up the APNs, pull up the addresses, and pull up all the information of what the previous zoning was and what it was going to. A lot of these sites that were identified were outreach from property owners to city staff, requesting that their sites be included. So that was accommodated. Again, also, it included some of the staff identifying appropriate sites that could be rezoned. We did establish a list that was... It was sent through Planning Commission, as I'll note in a moment. We did have one property owner had about 12 acres that did. It was going from commercial to a mixed use. And that would allow commercial or residential, in which case that individual or property owner came back and said, I'd like to be removed from the list. Therefore, you'll see a discrepancy in acreage. But we do have 63 parcels that are being rezoned right now, which is actually 421.09 acres, which will provide an additional 6,638 units or opportunities for residential units. With this zone change, there is no physical development that is contemplated. All development will be contemplated at the time of submittal, in which case then SEQA, or the California Environmental Quality Act, will be reviewed for that project. And also, will any Compliance with Endangered Species Act or the California Endangered Species Act will be evaluated at when development is proposed? And the reason I say that is because we did receive a late comment letter on this one, also from Friends of the Bakersfield Kit Fox and Environment. And that was transmitted in a memorandum. The Planning Commission did approve this zone change or recommend approval of this zone change on June 20th, 2024. Similar to the previous project I discussed, there was no one in support or opposition to this project. We had no correspondence. So the Planning Commission unanimously approved that on consent. City Council, or Planning Commission and city staff recommend that the zone changes are appropriate and necessary for adoption of the sixth cycle housing element. Therefore, we recommend approval of zone change number 24-0339. Staff's available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, hearing item 8B is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Emma De La Rosa, and I'm the Regional Policy Manager with Leadership Council for Justice and Accredibility. First of all, I want to acknowledge the work that the city is continuing to do to ensure that it is in compliance with the housing element. I understand it's a huge undertaking that we desperately need to complete. So thank you for all of your work. However, we do have some concerns related to affirmatively furthering for housing and the compliance of Government Code Section 6558.3.2. We did include some comments in our comment letter related to the discrepancies from the Planning Commission staff report to today's staff report. But staff was able to address those concerns. So thank you so much. We understand why there is a decrease. However, the amendments to government... I'm sorry, the... One second. The proposed ordinance is inadequate because it must demonstrate that the proposed rezonings meet all requirements in Government Code Section 6558.3.2 subdivision H and I. Specifically, the proposed ordinance does not indicate if the city now permits owner-occupied and rental multifamily uses by right for developments in which 20% or more of the units are affordable to lower-income households. So that is not addressed in the ordinance. So that should be addressed before approving the rezone. Lastly, as I mentioned, we are concerned about affirmatively furthering for housing. The city does have a duty to AFFH, and we are concerned about the over-concentration of low-income housing. Not only is the city over-concentrating low-income housing on the east side of Bakersfield, east of the 99, but it is also over-concentrating it in the city's most environmentally burdened areas. As HCD included in their comments, the city must foster inclusive communities. However, at this time, the city's inventory appears to concentrate a large share of units available to lower-income households in the southeast and central portions of the city. I know you can't really tell by the map because the, on the east side, the little dots are much smaller. So you can only really see the larger sites in the map. And you do see that they are spread out throughout Bakersfield. However, when you look at the central and southeast Bakersfield, there are much smaller parcels or acreage that are going to be zoned for multifamily housing, specifically R4 and MX1 and MX2, which would lead up to 30 to 100 units per acre, if I'm not mistaken. Please correct me if I'm wrong. But that is a concern. We ask that you incorporate mobility strategies as identified in the HCD guidance memo to ensure that the city is affirmatively furthering for housing and not perpetuating patterns of segregation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, item 8B, and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. In response, again, to the Friends of the Kit Fox, there is no physical development. So there is no problem as far as the Kit Fox are concerned? Isn't that the nexus?
With these zone changes, there is no development proposed. When development is proposed, the Endangered Species Act or California Endangered Species Act will both be considered at that time. Yes.
Yes, thank you. With that, I will make the motion to approve item 8B.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak. So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I will not be here at the next meeting. So thank you, Mr. Stragalous, for your service. And you moved the department in a good direction. And one little heat wave, you moved to the coast. I don't know. Do appreciate it and congratulations. I wish you the best. And I just wanted to reinforce, Park Staff had mentioned the Fourth of July event at Riverwalk. And once again, a great community event and just a great opportunity for everybody to come together and for the city to put on a fireworks show is a good thing. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak. So with that, we stand adjourned at 6:55.